At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for February 10th, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, let the roll call show everyone's here. I'm sure some of us are battling some colds, though. And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes, January 27th, 2020.
I have one thing in the bag.
All right. Councilmember Kibble, you had something?
Yes, please. Page nine. At the bottom of the page, it should be not, not no, that first word on the last sentence. Page 11. Oh, no. Actually, that was all I had. Thank you. No, I take that back. The last page. The fourth sentence down, it should read, and commissions, and if anyone is interested. And on the next line, it should be PBS, not CBS. Thank you.
Councilmember Richards, you had something?
Yes. I haven't got the exact page you can turn to, but somewhere in this, it lists the property at Dixborough and 10 Mile as 896 Lake Street, and it's 825 Lake Street. It's not a big deal, but I can't read it right now, but it's in there. Just let you know. Thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll move the minutes as amended.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the bills. Councilmember Kibble?
There is an entry here for $2.20 from Michigan Cat. My wife works there, so I'm going to abstain.
I'll move the bills.
I'll support.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda?
Move the agenda.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll move the agenda.
Count that as a second.
Okay.
That's all right.
I didn't hear you. I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of tonight's consent agenda. It is the resignation of Heather Marie Montilla from the Cultural Arts Commission, effective February 5th, 2020.
Move the consent agenda.
I'll support.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please be sure to state your name and address.
Yes, Ryan Laras, 716 Grand Court. I'm here on behalf of the Cultural Arts Commission tonight. Josie and Joe and Ken could not be present. I wanted to personally thank Heather Marie for her excellent job on the cultural arts. She was a huge part of our cultural arts family, and due to kind of constraints, she had to resign. But we want to welcome her anytime to help us out, and we thank her for everything that she did. Huge help. Thank you. Thank you, Heather Marie.
Thank you. At this time, we will close the public comment and move on to the discussion of downtown with Mr. Donahue.
All right. Again, you have your report from Paul. Working, finalizing the DDA's budget. Had the last meeting today. Our board retreat is Thursday night, February 13th. So we'll finalize our budget at the official board meeting at 6:00 PM that night, and then have a retreat to follow. Hope to have, will have, definitely have, the annual report for the DDA and economic development at the next council meeting. Have continued to meet with property owners on other building rehab projects for 2020. February 26th, 6:00 PM, City Hall, the Cool Yule meeting wrap-up and planning for 2020 begins. We're going to meet with one rep each of the DDA, Downtown Businesses, Carl and Joanne Foundation, City, the parade itself, Historical Society, churches and schools. And so we'll meet with one rep from each of those groups and start planning. Start planning forward. Looking forward to it. That's all I have.
Great. Does anyone have anything for Bob? Councilmember Kennedy?
Bob, what time is that meeting on February 26th?
6:00 PM at City Hall, in one of the conference rooms as you come in.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let you know, Bob, that City of Novi has a vacancy that has been there for two years because they have been unable to fill it with respect to their Economic Development Director. So I just want to let you know that I don't think your position's going to be as quick as maybe some may think. I know Novi's been trying for several years, but they have a niche over there. But just wanted to let you know that individuals like yourself are in extremely high demand.
Thank you. I have, in response to that, reached out to people in our statewide association, Michigan Downtown Association, and I've had good conversations with three people, and who I know are very interested. I know that at least one of those has expressed an interest, has applied and has come to look at the city. So I hope we, I feel confident we'll get a very capable person.
We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
I'm going to keep saying that. Not that it's going to change your mind.
I'm always a phone call away.
I know.
Mine is quick. I just wanted to ask again. I did skip a meeting. I just wondered if there was an update on the building that was the old draft, draft house or whatever that was?
I'm not worried, but I am interested to see what might be the hang-up because I've had a phone call into the Realtor for two weeks since the last council meeting, since the morning of the last council meeting. A week prior to that, I was told that there was a purchase order, not a purchase order, purchase agreement. And so that there was a purchase agreement signed, and that the closing was within 30 days. I just wanted to see how that was going, and I haven't heard.
All right. I'll skip a couple of meetings before I ask you again.
I think we only get one.
One more. No, I'm going to ask you next meeting.
Anyone else have anything for Bob this evening? All right. Thanks a lot, Bob.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the Fire Chief Report with Chief Vogel, and we're going to hope that whatever rolled the screen up two weeks ago took the week off.
Yep, be quick.
Just had to open my mouth.
This restarted. It's like seven times.
Can I try to, can I run it? Nope.
You have to stay there.
We need to have one of these little buttons.
That's mine.
Okay, we'll just do it without running the.
It's more like, this is more like plug and pray, right?
We could see it, though.
There's definitely something wrong in the run.
Is it me?
It isn't uncommon for that thing to seem to lag from the monitors, too.
So I'll just do it this way. So I will not drag this out, I promise. You've received my report. Kirsten, come on. This is Kirsten Meehan. She was the 2018 Firefighter of the Year. She's our rock star. She does about 75% of all the calls, so.
All right.
I just want to kind of hit the highlights. I know sometimes my report has a lot of stuff. So what I did is I kind of did a couple of slides, break it down. We'll run through it real quick, and if there's any questions afterwards, love to answer them. So 2019 was the busiest year that the South Lyon has ever seen in 126 years. We did 933 calls. Some of the other significant highlights was we renegotiated a contract with HVA, saving, making the city an additional $4,000. We installed over 250 smoke detectors, 25 CO alarms. The average response time in the city was five minutes and 37 seconds. We had zero hours of employee injury loss hours. Pretty proud of that. We received a bunch of grants. One of them was the State of Michigan for 216 smoke detectors and 30 COs. We received a grant for the thermo imager. We received a grant for the active shooter safety vests. We did 1,214 hours of training that's in-house. That doesn't include what was outside. Sergeant Cindy Conrad became a state-certified instructor, which is a huge deal for the future. And finally, we bought the new extrication equipment that was battery-powered. As said before, we did 933 runs compared to 706 in 2018, which is a 30% increase. We did respond to every call. However, it did take a toll. There was a toll on our people and the budget and some of the equipment, i.e. the ladder truck seems like it was, took it pretty hard last year. Breakdown of the calls, we did, we responded 28 structure fires compared to 19 in 2018, eight of which, which was in the city, compared to four the previous year. Total loss of damage was $51,600, which is a $20,000 increase. We responded to total of 39 fire calls, which are structures, vehicles, trash, et cetera. And then we did 595 EMS calls, which is a huge increase of 39%. Some of the, whoa. Some of the major incidents we had in 2019, we ended the year, obviously, with the Lyon Cantina, which was in Lyon Township. However, we were first there. We had an electrical fire at the PNC Bank. We had a machine fire at the Michigan Seamless Tube. We also had probably the biggest story of the year was the Michigan Seamless Tube Industrial Accident. During the Cool Yule, we had a small garage fire on Stanford. And then we had the fatal car crash at East Lake and Lyon. And finally, we had a gentleman that was hit by a train at East Lake and Reynolds Suite, who lived, by the way. Some of the major station and apparatus equipment upgrades is, I'm pretty proud of our women's locker room and bathroom upgrades. The ladder truck had the whole cable system replaced on the ladder. Engine 2 had the pump rebuilt. It had the motor repaired, the frame repaired. We bought the Hearst extrication equipment. We, with the grant, purchased a new thermo imager camera. Unfortunately, we damaged it at the Cantina Fire, but it still works. And finally, we bought an AED. Human resources, Doug Beers retired from the city, and we stole him back. He currently works full-time for Green Oak Township Fire Department. We're fortunate to have him work evenings and nights for us. It's about the only way we could cost-effectively keep our maintenance on our vehicles. As said before, Cindy became a state-certified instructor. We hired eight new employees. Unfortunately, nine left the department. Arnold became a firefighter one and two. He just graduated from EMT yesterday. Dan Layton was the firefighter of the year, and past chief Craig Casca died in December, and Charles Beers passed away in April. And our goals for 2020 is recruitment and retention. Now, we are at a record high of 26, but I don't think we're going to hold it. Unfortunately, we keep teaching, making good firefighters, and they keep getting hired, i.e. Kirsten's probably leaving me next month. So that's the price that we pay of making good firefighters. Everybody wants to steal them. Of the 1,214 hours of training, it was all in-house, which included training with Green Oak, Lyon, Salem, all the, you know, many departments in Oakland County, Livingston and Washtenaw. We did survival flight training, which we even landed a helicopter at Bartlett School, which caused a lot of phone calls. We did a great training, probably one of the better ones I've been to, an active shooter, which council was there with PD at Bartlett School. We did multiple trainings at the McCady House and the McMunn House. We're going to miss those when they finally get torn down. And of course, we do ice rescue training, which we're going to get into tomorrow. Our goals for 2020 is building a burn building. We have, we get the answer to the grant tomorrow or Wednesday, fingers are crossed. We plan some more training with Green Oak and Lyon and Salem, and we're going to try to get more guest instructors that specialize in autistic children, psych meds, stuff like that. So that's kind of our goal. The grants we already spoke of, we did, we rewarded $10,350.81. We have huge goals set for 2020. The SCBA grant is probably going to be about $2 million when it's all said and done with all the cities that have joined in. Again, we find out about the burn building tomorrow, and then we're considering a station exhaust system. The one we currently have is just old and doesn't work great. Typical year for us, we spent a lot of time, over 1,000 hours, doing Pumpkin Fest, Cool Yule, the New South Lyon Eve. We did six Lake Street Cruisins, the Triple B, five high school games. There's two farmers market kid days we do, and multiple school visits and station visits, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, ECC likes to come. This is Inspector Matthews' numbers. He inspected 287 buildings. There was six vacant buildings in the city compared to 14 in 2018. That's because of Bob. But I think, and that's going to probably go down again, probably at least in half by next year. We viewed 20, he viewed 25 blueprints, which is a big deal because there are usually lots of them. Numerous tents and special permits reviewed. Total inspector hours, 384. And then last slide is kind of the goals and the challenges that I deal with and my team. Of course, the recruiting and retention, which we're there, but I feel we're about to take a dip. We want to, since Cindy's become trained as a state-certified instructor, we've been trying to do more in-house, have stuff that Cindy can teach. We've been sending her to schools. She just took one from Detroit, Detroit Edison. Just gave her a great school. The station continues to be a challenge. It's old. I'm proud of my team that we had, two weeks ago, water was coming in like I've never seen. And literally, I went and bought some of that Flex Seal. I sent the young guys up, or young man up there, and he fixed it with $30 in Flex Seal. The apparatus, we have addressing one of them in this year's budget. And then finally, we're trying to expand the community CPR program. We identified a need that people in this town want CPR or needed to be renewed. So I'm working with the new web designer to see if we can figure out a way to steal, to make a page that matches like the library where people can, will do a quarterly class or monthly, and they can get on the website and sign up. That's that. That was our 2019. Any questions?
Great job, Chief. Anyone have anything for Chief? Councilmember Dill, go ahead and lead us off.
I just wondered if you had any thoughts on, I understand, I kind of guess is for the medical increase, but the structure and the other fire increase, do you have any thoughts on, I mean, that just seems like so much more.
Growth. And that doesn't even count what we, so the whole growth around us is pretty incredible. What's happening in Lyon, I believe I heard it was the number one growing township in the state last year, Green Oak. And some of the biggest fires, obviously, were outside the city. And inside the city, I don't know why it doubled. It just, it was interesting. I'm not, there wasn't really big fires in the city, except the Cantina, which is not in the city. But we did have a house that received significant damage off of 9 Mile. And there was, again, no fire at Seamless Tube. They had one in their machines. It's hard to say.
I also, just really quickly, wanted to say, beyond all the stuff that you talked about, I just am really impressed with your online presence. What I really love is people will get onto one of our forums and be talking, you know, arguing about something, and you'll just pop in and be like, actually, this is what happened. And then everybody just shuts it down.
Well, you have to be careful, right? Because there's HIPAA laws, and I can't explain, well, what happened to the person, but there's a way to maybe, like you said, sometimes those comments can really get out of control.
I just really appreciate it. It's really, I mean, it's outside of even what you need to be doing, and it's really appreciated. And I know that other people in the community really appreciate, you give an answer, and then it just shuts it down. Everybody's like, oh, okay. And then moves on.
It probably sends a phone call to Paul's office.
So it's really great. I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Hi. Just a curious question here.
Sure.
Providing the applicant for a fire job, okay, is of the right age range and in good health, okay, man or woman, okay? About how many years does it take to train a firefighter, okay, for a small-town fire department like us, okay, to be capable on everything that we have to contend with, okay, in this town? About how many years does it take?
Well, so we start with, since most of our calls are emergency medicals, we try to get them in what's called Emergency Medical Technician Class. And that's generally, depending on the speed of the class, four to six months. Generally, we try to send them to either Farmington, Ann Arbor, and then we always, then you go on to fire school, which starts in November in Brighton, and then graduates in late June. So what I tell people is, it's 18 months. 18 months from when you walk in the door, you do our OJT program, on-the-job training, which someone like Kirsten is trained to teach young people to work, well, anybody, actually, I should say. And once we get them through that, then we try to find a class, and we look all over. We try to stay within a reasonable travel. And then, then they pass EMT, and then they go on to fire school. So 18 months is a true person that's fully trained, ready to go.
Okay, all right. I thought it might be longer than that.
Well, it could get up to two years if timing's not right. If somebody comes in December where they missed something, or you might have to wait for the next round of class schedule.
Yeah. Well, thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Kibble?
Just to kind of piggyback on what Lisa had said, the public communication that you guys are providing for the city is really awesome. Being at all these events, the idea of being online and just dispersing information, just to keep people informed about what's going on in the backyard, you know? I really am grateful for that because we certainly don't have the insight to understand everything that you guys have going on. So for you to relay that information out to the public is really helpful.
Keep in mind, Paul has, we're trying to make it better. I believe sometimes trying to find some of the information about permits for tents, we need to address it. And we've been meeting with internet people, providers and website designers, and I think we're going to figure out a way that really makes that city website, if you need, if you're a citizen, finding this will be a lot easier.
Well, that would be huge.
Yeah. And I think that's the goal, at least, from what I've heard from Chief Solvik and I and Paul. I believe that's what the, still utilizing Facebook and, like, I like Twitter to tell people Pontiac Trail shut down, you know? Try to go around it, or Instagram or Facebook and.
But that community presence is really cool, too, at all of our events and that.
I mean, people get a kick out of seeing, not just the gear, but seeing that you guys
are interacting with our community.
You want to see what a $500,000 truck looks like, you know? Why is it so big and so expensive? Well, this is why.
Yeah. That's all good information for them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Rob, you and I have already discussed the report. I think you did a terrific job putting that together. Just one quick question on the grants and that. Is there any possibility of get, applying for another grant for another Lucas device? You said it had to wait a year.
So I think in October will be the two years.
Oh, two years, okay.
Yeah. Weir has worked, he's working on, we're looking at two additional grants that we're still kind of feeling out. The firehouse would be another. I would love to have a second one. We had an incident recently where the Lucas was in Green Oak, and CPR came in. So we've made some changes that that shouldn't happen again, but it would be nice to have that second unit. It has been amazing what that product has done. We recently used it two weeks ago, and I really thought we were going to have a save, but unfortunately, it didn't work as well. But it was, it's an amazing device, what it does for allowing people to do other things and then, you know, instead of chest compressions. And then we're also looking at some cameras, in-vehicle cameras, that Michigan Risk Management recommends, so we're kind of approaching that.
Okay, so the two years is up in October, that, I mean, for, you know, 15,000 dollar grant, that's great.
Yes, because I think in October 2018, we got it. So that'll be the two-year window, and we would definitely do another one.
Okay. Terrific. Thanks.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, just a quick question. I know you're talking about doing a CPR program. Have you thought about adding in a mental health first data program?
No, but we're always.
I used to go to Lansing for mine, so I'm wondering, I would love to see that here.
Well, see, Kirsten and Cindy are my trainers, and that would be something that, I've never heard of it. Have you? Nope. So is that something like the UVM requires?
I'm taking my class on Thursday, so.
Is it UVM required?
Is it a new thing? No, it's not.
Okay.
So it's something I'm doing on my own.
Okay.
But I would like to see that in our community.
Well, I put Cindy on it because, like, this CPR thing has really taken off. We literally did all of DPW and wastewater last month. Cindy had to go to a factory this morning at 5:00 to try to catch the night shift. We are stumbling through, trying to figure out, we don't charge, but American Health requires $20 to pay for the book and the CPR card. So trying to get that worked out, which I'm hoping that with the website people, we can figure out a way to pay. So that's the goal, is to really, because babysitters need it and daycare centers need it, and we have a law office that says, can you teach our people? These two have been spending a lot of time. I think she's done two classes alone recently. Cindy's done a couple. So I think we're thinking about maybe like a group, monthly or quarterly, class that we'll promote heavily to see if we can get some interest.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you. I'm going to ask you a couple of questions regarding the employees.
Sure.
You made a comment that had been a little bit hard on the employees with respect to the amount of servicing that has been done over the past year. What do you mean by that? Do you mean, do you mean that they were overworked, it was overtime, or do you mean?
So Kirsten, who does 75% of the calls, comes to every night call. And then she works shift. So it just, it just takes a toll. The busier we've gotten, you know, it's not uncommon to have two calls at night, one in the morning, three in the morning, which just kills your sleep pattern. And, you know, I've seen days where she comes in, 7:00, ready to start shift. Did you go to both calls, Kirsten? Yep. And it just, and then some of the stuff that we've seen, you know, I'm always looking out for the mental health of my people.
That was, that was the other point of the question.
There's some things that happened this year that's been challenging. And I recently worked with Patricia to make sure, because we've had, I guess, insurance change with our EAP provider, so I made sure I got information, it's posted in the wall, trying to get some flyers available, just to make sure that we're dealing with that type of, so it's mental and physical?
So, does the fire department have adequate resources to deal with the mental health issues?
Yes.
For employees that are seeing things that no other person would see? Particularly because you're dealing with young individuals that, that have not gone to war, so they, they're, they're not trained, they don't have that mentality with respect to the rigidity that sometimes you have, the emotional rigidity to some of these things that they see. So the mental health issue is there, the funding is there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because, you know, Employee Assistance Program is free.
Okay.
The city pays for it, and these employees are encouraged to call it.
Okay.
I teach my officers how to look out for depression. When we had the young lady that was hit by a train, the previous, that'd be 2018, there was an employee that had an effect. And I made sure that we reached out, we touched base, we made sure the person got the numbers, and they came out well. I, I have no question about the systems built for us and PD or anybody else in this city.
Okay.
And I heard, I kind of played with it, and what I like about it is, you call and, you know, they have different avenues. Oh, you have a financial problem, or a mental problem, or grieving, and they, it's just not pigeonholed. It's, it's, I was pretty impressed.
Okay, so the safety net is there for the employees?
Yes, yes.
With respect to those issues. Now, what is your solution to the issue that you just brought up with this, with the, with this situation?
Well, without getting into my budget, which you will hear soon, is maybe, it, it's tough, right? So we, we, I found some, I don't want to get too much in the budget because you're going to hear it later.
Okay, so there's a budget solution?
Yes, I, yes.
To, to what this issue is?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Chief Vogel? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Great job. Very informative.
Turn it off.
Um, I'll give you a hand with that. Chief Solvik, you don't need the projector?
With that, we will move on to the police chief report with Chief Solvik.
Okay, obviously, you guys have a lot of information in front of you. It took some time to put together, but just want to go over a couple of the highlights that I thought were fairly important this year and for us as a, as a department, so I'm just going to read something here for you. The biggest change and difference this past year was in personnel. In a police agency the size of South Lyon, every member's contribution is not only important to a success, but vital. I'm very proud to represent this agency as a chief, but I'm also reminded that titles without action and relationships are meaningless. My focus this past year was to bring a fresh and different style of leadership to the department. And my email signature is the following phrase, which I firmly embrace. If serving is below you, then leadership is beyond you. It's pretty self-explanatory. Servant leadership is a leadership philosophy built on the belief that the most effective leaders strive to serve others rather than accrue power and take control. For me, being the leader means building up each member of the team and letting them know that they are valued as both officers and individuals. While it is a simple task, it has been the most neglected. I don't consider the South Lyon Police Department to be my police department, it is our department, mine, the officers and staff, council, and the people that we serve. We are Michigan's fifth safest city, not only because of the efforts of the men and women of the police and fire departments, but because of the awesome people in our community. It makes South Lyon a great place to lay down roots. Each member of our agency contributed to changing our mission statement to reflect what we, as a department, want to embody towards each other and the community we serve. Because of this, we have grown stronger with our community, and the department as a whole has become a close-knit group, which is why I often refer to our SLPD family in our Facebook pages. The mission of the South Lyon Police Department is to maintain excellence in law enforcement while strengthening the partnership with our community. It's very simple, it's very straight to the point, not much explanation needed. In continuation with change, we wanted a new look to our police patch. The last patch we wore was a collaboration of one or two individuals. Our new patch is a combination of ideas and thoughts by several members of our department. With assistance from our Facebook followers, we decided on a new design submitted by a high school student named Dominic Albannis. We received several compliments on the new design. With our desire to interact with our community more often, officers started walking into businesses and introducing themselves to business owners and store employees, sort of like a meet and greet. Our staff picks various locations in the city, introduce themselves, and ask if there are any issues or problems inside or outside their establishment. Usually, the quick interaction ends with our officer leaving a business card, informing the staff to contact us if they have any questions or concerns. While there have been more positive changes in our department, I thought I'd highlight just a few. The morale has never been higher, and we've never been healthier as a police department. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to. And, and Councilmember Kivel, last meeting, we had a discussion about you seeing more people downtown, and like I said, that was before, that was intentional. When you have the, the business, the downtown area growing as, as effective as it is, you know, you have people, there's going to be more people in the city, and when they're in the corner social or they're shopping downtown, we want them to see us rolling by as often as possible. We want them to give the impression that we, that we are a safe city. So you're going to see us a lot more in the downtown areas during the day when most people are visiting the city, so just trying to advertise what we, what we have to offer, so...
Councilmember Kivel?
Well, this is really, I mean, both, both fire and police did a terrific job with your annual reports. It's comprehensive and it's, it's, it's very thorough and explains what's going on. And I really do applaud you for the narrative about just the sort of change of concept that you guys are taking in your interaction with the community. And I, I think that's really valued. People recognize what's going on. Heck, if I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not the most observant guy in the world, but I recognize what was going on with your policing and the patterns that everybody was doing that were atypical. So it was kind of cool to see. And seeing the explanation in here of just the mindset and just affirming the fact that you guys recognize what a cool city this is and, and reaching out to do the, the, the personal contact with people so that they know if there's any kind of an issue, you're really available. And, I mean, a lot of times you see that, and it just doesn't seem genuine. And I mean, I'm, I'm sure that your guys actually convey that to be a genuine offer to them. So I think that everyone appreciates that. So I just wanted to pass that on, so...
Councilmember Kennedy?
Chris, you and I have already talked about the, the annual report. I think you did a great job on that. We've already talked about some of the same things that Councilmember Kivel mentioned. I think that's exemplary, that we're having that interaction with the business owners and throughout the city. The other thing, and just like with Chief Vogel, the interaction between the departments with the residents, whether it's a touch a truck or the other civic events that we have throughout the city, passing out candy at Halloween or whatever, I mean, that's, that goes a long way in a small town like this, so. The only other thing that was in there, and I also like the, the organization chart, that's helpful for me because I, it takes two, three times before I actually recognize people, so now I can put the name with the face and hopefully get it right. The other thing was, I looked at the conversion rate between the warnings and the tickets, and that's been relatively consistent. I mean, you know, we're not out there trying to catch people doing something wrong all the time. We're out there to advise them when they've done something wrong, and if it's egregious enough, then they get the ticket. So, I mean, it's, it's been pretty consistent this year, throughout, every year that you, every time you reported.
Yeah, we've been very fair. You know, one of the things is, we, we actually kind of backed off a number of, of stops and the citations that we, that we, that we were given in the past in order to partner more with our community and just have those community contacts with businesses, you know, and, and, you know, don't be surprised if, you know, when you, you're out in your, your yard doing some landscaping or something that I'm going to stop in or one of our officers is going to stop in, say, hey, how you doing? I'm so-and-so. How's things going? Any issues, any problems? So we've got some more things in, in store for this year, but we like where we're at right now, where we come from to where we're at right now, so it's been very healthy.
Yeah, great job. Thanks.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you. Without a doubt, the, the change in the police department with you as the chief has resulted in just a wonderful, wonderful public relations effort on the police department and the community. I think you, you know that, and I've already spoken to you about it. Individuals in the community just can't believe the difference in the police department from just a year ago or a year and a half ago. I think that speaks highly of how you are taking the job in terms of its seriousness and its importance in terms of public relations. One of the other things I wanted to let you know that I thought I was extremely impressed with was the new hire. I think sometimes we in South Lyon have a tendency to think that we should hire local, and maybe that's a good thing. But I think you brought in somebody from the outside that clearly has some very sophisticated skill sets that add to the skill set that's in the department and building, and I thought that that was a very strategic move on your part to build on the skill sets and to include this additional officer that's, that was brought in from Farmington. And I think, quite frankly, I think it was just a point of brilliance to, to be able to do that, because that had not been done before in terms of stratifying skill sets over there in the police department. I've been watching, I know what's going on, I, I read everything, and this was a very strategic move, and I just want to commend you on that.
Thank you. Thanks.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I just want to reiterate what everyone here is saying. It sounds like the narrative out there, you know, keeping us the safest, the fifth safest city in the state is wonderful, but the fact that you have such a high morale and the way you have gone about things to go into businesses, introduce yourselves, driving by, waving at people, stopping in to see how they're doing, they know that they're safe. And that really brings that positive narrative into our city, so that's just a really huge thing. So thank you.
Councilmember Dill?
Just really quickly, I just wanted to say, and I come from, so my ex-husband is a state trooper, so I have, you know, I've lived that life for a long time, and I, I've seen good and I've seen bad. And the one thing that I've just been really happy with, with your department and with Chief Vogel is, and I don't, I don't know how to make this sound like it's not condescending, but you're just such good, kind men. And I think that that really leads to such a positive force. And I've seen, I've seen it be really bad before in a, you know, a very, and we've seen it in other cities, too. So I just, I really appreciate that, and I appreciate seeing you taking, having those times where you've taken kids to school and, and the cars and things like that, I just think they're wonderful. And then the same thing I said to Chief Vogel, your online presence, very helpful. It's not, you know, I like, it's not all the time, but sometimes you jump in there and shut something down, which is really nice, offer some information, and it really helps people. So I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Richards?
Hi, Chief, Chief Solvik. Ditto everything that everybody else has said here on this. It's wonderful the way you've made the transition. I got a question. Okay. In the past, in the, in the last year, so you've had a problem with the computer, okay, and interfacing with Lyon Township Substation, Oakland County, even with our city hall getting things, you know, because our machinery isn't balanced very well. Has that worked out fairly well for you now?
Yeah, with the new IT company and the plan that we have in place, Paul and I, talking with our new IT company, we're kind of budgeting for certain things, and, you know, some of the infrastructure is old and it's broken down, and there are some things that we were, that we're needed. We are addressing those with this current budget that we have and also with a future budget, so things are coming together, so yes.
Well, that's wonderful, because that's certainly is something that you depend on, okay, to be able to communicate with the agencies and the, you know, the city hall and everything, Chief Wiss. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have, anything else for Chief Solvik? Great job, Chief. It's a privilege to work with yourself and your department, along with Chief Vogel and his department as well, so thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to old business number one, tax abatement policy.
Well, over the past two previous meetings, you received information. Based upon, really, our goal is to adopt a program and guidelines, not to get involved in specific projects. This puts us on a par with other communities as a progressive economic development community that offers a tool, specific guidelines, specific criteria, if and when someone were to apply. So I, open to questions. Paul has an additional item that he handed out as an example, a generic example, and so we're open for questions.
I don't have a question, but I had asked that Paul put together this, that what it would be, that would be missing in the event that we were to establish this and have an active project that was valued at $1 million. You can see that the loss that we would end up incurring during the course of the abatement would end up being $17,000 in taxes that would be provided to us. You know, I'd figure at $1 million, by the, the chart that had been kind of laid out earlier, as a maximum of two or three years of abatement for a project that would be a half million to two and a half million dollars, you know, so we'd end up, likely end up not seeing $34,000 worth of project, or a worth of tax base, but, you know, if you end up having a jewel that would not likely have been brought about without the little assistance there, you know, that, that kind of changes the complexion of things, so. I don't see this as being ubiquitous, but I can absolutely see where there are projects that this would end up being valued to us, so...
Councilmember Kennedy?
I guess the other thing to, to remember is, I mean, we don't have to invoke it. Each circumstance is, is individually assessed, certainly, but it's good to have the procedure in place so that we're not working out of the hole when somebody comes and says, hey, I want to do this, what's your stand on having an abatement? So I think it's, it's, makes sense to have this in our, in our back pocket there, and again, we take it and apply it to the individual circumstance and make that decision based on what's coming to the table. So I appreciate the, the research, appreciate the information that's been provided.
Councilmember Richards?
Bob, in making my, coming to my own conclusion and evaluation on this, I've had to give you and everybody else the benefit of the doubt on this and, and discipline myself to think outside of the box of my own experience in my life and think in terms of 15 years down the road or beyond my lifetime in our community, okay, and how this can help out and be useful. And it's my opinion it can be, okay? We've got to, if this community's going to get big, big business or, or big ideas, big bucks from big investors, we've got to have something to attract them, because we don't have any, like, mayor, what was it, Galis said, there's nothing in here to, in our community currently to incentivize, okay, people to expand their businesses and everything. This is a great tool. It only, granted, it only will affect a, a small number, but there's the bigger numbers, okay? And, and in the future, if we expand our boundaries, we'll have a larger commercial district, okay, in the future. You've got to think in terms of, you know, the future, okay? Therefore, I'm in favor of this. I was against it initially, but I'm fully in favor of it now. Thank you for your work.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Yes, I'd like to move to approve the proposed City of South Lyon Commercial Rehabilitation Tax Abatement Program Policy and Guidelines in accordance with Michigan's Commercial Rehabilitation Act, Public Act 210 of 2005, as amended.
I support.
Any further discussion? We have a motion by Councilmember Kurtswell, supported by Councilmember Walton, to approve the proposed City of South Lyon Commercial Rehabilitation Tax Abatement Program Policy. the proposed City of South Lyon Commercial Rehabilitation Tax Abatement Program Policy and Guidelines in accordance with Michigan's Commercial Rehabilitation Act, PA 210 of 2005, as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
If I may, I would like to thank you all for, again, I made a statement when asked that this council has been so supportive of economic development, and I really appreciate it. It shows us as a leader. We really have joined with the cities. We are in the top tier of cities at economic development. We're in the top tier of cities with downtown development. And I think we're recognizing it. It costs more to do historic buildings, and so, thank you. Thank you very much.
Lisa, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification. When was it amended?
It's the Public Act.
Oh, you were talking about the Public Act, not the policies. I'm sorry.
It's the Public Act that was amended. 2005 is amended.
I, I thought you were adopting the policies as amended. I'm like, they weren't amended. What are you, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Councilmember Kennedy, could I ask a favor of you to see if my council conduct policies ended up in your pile here? If not, we have a small catastrophe. But I'm sure I can find it. It was here at the beginning of the meeting. Ah, thank you. Well, I'm going to take yours. Thank you. I apologize. On to old business number two, city council rules and procedure. Paul, I'm going to let you take the lead on this for a moment, and let us find where we were at.
Jay Disorder. At our December 9 meeting, council presented a, presented a council draft rules of procedure that I felt should be looked at and adopted by city council to ensure efficient operations of our city in our meetings. In this document, rules addressing meetings, agendas, minutes, parliamentary procedures, comments, relationships with staff, consultants, et cetera. Since that meeting, all council members provided feedback. And at our last meeting, we went over several sections of the draft. At our meeting tonight, we'll begin discussion at section five, conduct of meetings, subsection J, disorderly conduct. And I'll briefly read some of the things, not only for you, but also the listening audience here as well as at home. The state persons addressing the council should make a responsible comment and refrain from making personal, impertinent slanderous or profane remarks. The mayor may call to order any person who is being disorderly by speaking when not recognized by the chair or otherwise disrupting proceedings by failing to be germane, by speaking longer than the allotted time, or by speaking vulgarities. Such person shall thereupon be seated until the chair shall have determined whether the person is in order. If a person so engaged in presentation shall be called out of order, here she'll, shall not be permitted to speak at the same meeting except upon special leave by the council. If the person shall continue to be disorderly and disrupt the meeting, the chair may order police department to remove the person from the meeting. No person shall be removed from public except for an actual breach of the peace committed at the meeting.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Just a reminder of what we discussed last time regarding public comment. I understand back in May of 2018, this council approved a resolution regarding public comment, and it was a pretty lengthy resolution. We talked about just essentially taking it and putting it in here since it's already been approved by council. There's also a section about the disorderly conduct in those resolutions with an appeal process and more detailed how it's handled, which I note were a lot of the comments made in this draft.
Do you want to have any comments on that? Councilmember Kennedy?
So that's your recommendation, Lisa? You want to go to what we've already passed? It's in a little more detail and insert it at this point?
Yes, I feel like it's already been hashed out. I've reviewed it. I think it's very well done. I think rather than, you know, address the concerns you've articulated, which are already addressed there, which city council has already approved, I feel like it would make things a little smoother. Obviously, this is going to come to you in a final draft form. You could review it at that point, and if you have changes, we can make it at that time.
That makes sense to me. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Kittle?
I think it'd be helpful, actually, if we could get a fresh copy of that. So I'm sure I have it at home, but I, it's probably buried.
Yes, we will get that.
Okay. So does everyone feel good moving on to, okay, all right?
Next section, case, suspension amendment of rules. These rules may be suspended or amended for a specified portion of a meeting by affirmative vote of two-thirds of the members present. Except that council action shall conform to state statutes and to the Michigan and United States Constitution. There was a recommendation made about would add corporate charter as well.
We can certainly add that, or Lisa, want to comment on that one?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the would add corporate charter comment. The charter does not address suspension of the rules. This is suspending these rules. So I didn't understand the comment to be able to address it.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Well, the person that wrote it doesn't want to speak up, so I guess we just strike it.
Does anyone else have any discussion, Councilmember Kittle?
I mean, everything is already covered under the, the rest of the documents that we're referring to, so.
Okay. All right. Moving on to letter aye.
Enforcement of rules. These rules are subject to enforcement by the city council as determined appropriate under applicable provisions of state law, the city charter, and Robert Rules of Order, which have been adopted above to the extent reasonably practicable. And penalty for violation hereof shall be in accordance with said provisions. Nothing was under that one. Next one, attendance. A council member who cannot attend a meeting bears responsibility of notifying the clerk of his or her anticipated absence. The council may excuse the absence for cause. If a council member has failed to attend three consecutive regular meetings of city council without providing prior notification, the member may be removed from office in accordance with the city charter and applicable state law.
From a legal standpoint, the only real issue that was raised in some of the comments was the unexcused absences concern. And I think just by not telling anybody is an unexcused absence. I think by telling somebody you will be unable to attend is considered an excused absence. How that is conveyed, though, I don't know. Paul, if you want to address the questions and comments that were made regarding to who to notify?
Yeah, we did designate the clerk, but whether it's notifying somebody else at the city or I guess another council member, and then it does notify the clerk in some way, shape, or form, then that would apply. It wasn't meant to just restrict that, okay, you can only get hold of the clerk and that's it. That wasn't the intention.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I, I have no misgiving with the idea of who has given notice, but the idea that simply by giving notice that you're excused, I don't, I'm not cool with that. I mean, if it's because I want to go to the racetrack or something like that, no, I don't think that that's appropriate, so.
Well, my two cents on the thing is, I feel like this was probably written in the world, before we live in today, with cell phones and whatnot. We've kind of been operating. If someone is sick or stuck at work, they either text me or email Lisa or whatever. That's, that's perfectly fine. If, if you want to clear up, what we've done here since I've been in the seat is someone will make a motion to excuse someone and then second it and so on. So.
It's practical, yeah.
That, I, I don't know if that's how that's written here, if that's, would it stay that way?
It seems reasonable to me. I mean, we've always been pretty, pretty easygoing with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's the kiss theory, right?
I suppose.
Council, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Kurtschwell, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, life is what it is. There is going to be meetings people can't make. I don't care where they're, they're at. I mean, they don't call somebody up and say, I can't be at the meeting because I'm going to be at the horse track. I mean, you know, they call and they say, I can't be at the meeting, period. And, and I think that that's just the way life is. You sometimes don't make it to work. You sometimes don't make it to church. You sometimes don't make it to a meeting. You sometimes don't make it to a graduation party. I mean, that's just the way life is. You know, life gets in the way. And I just think that there's a reason why the charter permits, you know, three excused absences, because I think they kind of figured, you know, back then, life got a little complicated, too. So I, I'm not into, like I said, I'm not a micromanager, so I, I don't really ask people why they're not here. I just trust if you're not here, you're not here. I'm going to excuse you. Pretty simple.
Councilmember Kennedy?
The city's experienced problems in this area in the past, and I think Councilman Kittle was on the council at the time, where we had council members that were not available for an extended period of time, and it became a question of what the priority truly was, being on the council or other things.
Yep.
And so I think that's maybe part of, and I don't want to speak for Councilman Kittle, but I think that may be part of what enters into whether or not it's voted to be an excused absence or not. And I'd like to hear Councilman Kittle's feelings on it.
Well, it's, I mean, it would, I think it should end up being conducted as it was then. If you get a majority of the people that excuse it, then it's excused. If you don't, then it's not, so.
Councilmember Kurtschwell?
Yeah, I'd just like to argue against that. I think that just allows the political whims to dictate, you know, if you're in favor with the majority, then you're going to get excused. And if you're not, then this is the way they turn the screw on your back. I mean, I just don't, I'm not in favor of that. I think if somebody is absent, you're absent. If you have more than three absences, you deal with it at that time. The charter has issues that you can resort to. And I think that, I don't know what the absences were with respect to a council member. The only council member I can remember that was not on council for a period of time was excused by council, they all knew it, for several months because of a reality show. So, I mean, that individual wasn't here for many, many meetings, many months, I think, three or four months. So I don't see that happening anytime soon. But I'm just, I'm just not in, that's just me. I'm just not in favor of four people controlling who gets excused and who doesn't.
Councilmember Richards?
Well, in the past, in the not-too-distant past, we've had councilmen and, and previous mayors that would say, announce to council, let the clerk know and everybody else, I'll be gone on vacation for three weeks, six weeks, or whatever it is, and I won't be available, okay? Just like our city manager tells us, he's going to be gone or something, you know. And we've approved it in advance. And I would hope we could do it the same way, without interruption, as we, if we're enforcing this or approving this, that the effort by the person to notify us that they'll be leaving for a period of time on a pre-arranged event, vacation, wedding, out of state funeral or something, whatever, okay, that there won't be any, you know, ill feelings about it, okay? Simple as that, and they can do it. That's all I wanted to say.
I feel like we're kicking the grass in the front yard here. This is ridiculous. This has been written like this for a long time. If you want to talk about factions, I mean, I don't think there's been a faction that's voted someone unexcused absence up here. I don't think that's been a problem. So is this a mountain we're really going to die on tonight and keep this up? Or do we keep it the way it was, and everyone is going to be an adult about it, and we excuse people when they've called in for an excused absence?
Yeah, that's the way it should be.
And that's the way it has been.
That's the way it should be.
Right. So, Lisa?
The only issue that was raised was whether or not we want to add somebody other than the clerk. If you want to add clerk, or mayor, or city manager to add that flexibility?
I, and I'm just shooting from the hip here, I have, I have no problem people contacting me. We've, we've had that happen. I mean, copying all three on an email would be cool. I mean, you know, I, you know, but we live in a text message world, so if someone texts somebody, I think that that gets the message across, whether it's Lisa Deaton, the clerk, or myself, or Paul. I, you know, I, I think that would be perfectly fine. I think all three of those should, could be down on the, on the list, if that's all right with everybody else.
Just so that I'm clear, then, is this paragraph staying as is with the addition of, or mayor, or city manager?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Lisa. I appreciate your effort over there tonight. Okay, so if anyone has any further discussion on attendance? Great, moving on.
Vacancy in council. If a vacancy occurs in any elective office, it shall be filled within 30 days by a vote of the majority of the remaining members of council. Such appointees shall hold office until the regular, next regular city election taken place, more than 60 days after such vacancy occurs, at which election a successor shall be elected by or an unexpired, unexpired term of the member in whose office the vacancy occurs.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Personally, I'd like to see, rather than 30 days, the 30 to 45 days. And, I mean, because the timing of where we are in the month and that can end up impacting how many likely meetings we'll have. So, and, and also, I'd like it to be open to the public and for 21 days for people to, for candidates to sign up, so to give us a reasonable pool of contenders.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Going through this, this procedure at the City of Novi, Brighton, and Wixom, they're basically looking that if the vacancy occurs 120 days or less before the next election, they would just defer and have that person added to the election.
Yeah.
So it didn't do away with the 60, it'd be 120 days. But they did also open it up to the general public. And again, that 120 days, the individuals that want to fill that vacancy would basically go through the same process that you go through initially, getting the petitions and all the rest of that to get on the ballot at that time.
Lisa? Councilmember Richards?
No, no.
Oh, Councilmember Kurtschwell?
I thought that with respect to the vacancy filled within 30 days, isn't that in the charter?
It is. I was trying to get the mayor's attention.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa.
It's section 5.6.
I think, I think the charter, so you're pretty restricted to that. And then somebody had a question, is there any provision for what happens in the case of a tie vote? I thought the charter said ties are by lot.
The charter is silent.
On that, I'll go back.
On nomination and voting and a vacancy. And so the only place you would go is?
Robert's Rules.
Robert's Rules, which has a whole paragraph on nominations and voting. And I did find the section where it talks about, in an assembly or organization that does not have a rule or established custom prescribing the method of voting in elections, the voting can be by any of the acceptable methods. And then it lists out all of the acceptable methods of voting.
Question. Councilmember Richards has not spoke yet, so we're going to go here first.
Okay, Lisa, can we amend this without amending the charter if we want to change it from the 30 days?
No.
Can't do it, okay.
Your charter is your law.
Okay, all right, fine. Thank you. Claire, go ahead.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Those other three municipalities reference the Michigan Election Law excerpt, Act 116 of 1954, that says the tie vote is determined by election-by-lot procedure drawn for the state legislature, where the canvassers basically put a piece of paper in, says elected or not elected, and they draw out who got elected for the election, if you want to, if we want to reference that, in a tie vote.
And that's for appointing on a vacancy?
That's for, if, if we go by an, by an appointment for a vacancy, and it's a tie vote, that's the procedure they use to break the tie.
That's the state for an election.
And that's the procedure that's referenced at those other three municipalities.
And you're suggesting we reference that as the avenue if there is a tie vote?
Well, it sounded as though you had suggested that Roberts has a laundry list of ways that we could go about that.
For voting, yes. The problem is, it's a pretty standard rule that if it's a tie vote, the motion fails. So if, if it is a tie, then the motion would fail and you'd have to consider somebody else unless you adopt rules similar, similar to what Councilmember Kennedy suggesting, or different rules.
At times like these, sometimes I wish we had a historian from year round. Not that you're not, Carl. Sorry.
That's okay.
You know, I'm just, I'm just kind of running through the, how many times, and I'm sure there's going to be times where this happens again, and I'm sure there's, there could be a tie down the road. I mean, I guess the question we want to ask ourselves is, do we want to have a resolution for that tie? for that tie? Or we just leave the future council and mayor and the staff here to figure it out on their own? So, Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
And, and again, if we don't want to reference the, the state election law, I mean, if we want to have that in the event of a tie, we could have the city clerk could serve that function, if that's feasible as well. She could in turn put the, those pieces of paper in a hat, and then have a designated person draw it out that says elected or not elected, and that's how it's determined. It's the same process, regardless of who actually does it. I don't want to be in a situation, you know, using Councilmember Kurtzwell's insight from before, where you have a faction on the council, and it's a three-three tie, and you don't get any replacement. So, somebody needs to be filling that seat to help the city move forward. And we need to, you know, plan for that eventuality.
I, I don't have any opposition to refer, referring to the state election law, if you're satisfied with the resolution they have incorporated.
I mean, either way, I just, I need, we need to have something in there that says, in the event of a tie, it's decided by lot, and however we're going to administer it.
Councilmember Kibble?
The benefit of that is, it's a certain action. I mean, you're going to get a conclusion, right? So, I mean, that is a fail, fail-safe, I think that would be reasonable.
Is everybody okay with doing that? I don't have a problem referencing it.
I don't have one.
It's an answer.
I can't imagine that this is going to happen on a by-yearly basis.
I just don't have a horse in the race.
Right. So, I think it's a good way to break a tie for a temporary, or, you know, filling in the spot on vacancy on council till that next election. So, as long as we probably have a majority over here for that.
It sounds like we do.
Okay.
Moving on.
Next section, standards of conduct for city council members. That's page eleven. City council members will be governed by the city code of ethics, as adopted and added by Chapter Two, Article Three of the City Code of Ordinances, and all their applicable state and federal laws.
Yeah, no complaints, nothing.
Any feedback on this one?
I just had one question.
Councilmember Richards?
Lisa, and Paul, I suppose also, who determines where the ethics begin and end on something like this?
Well, you have an ordinance that addresses ethics, and then there's state laws also.
But what, does anybody on this body?
Well, everybody's responsible for their own ethics. If there's a concern, it can be raised and can be addressed by council, or brought to the mayor, the city manager, and it would be handled appropriately.
Okay, all right. Okay, fine, thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any feedback on this one? All right. Paul?
Next, it's under city council, or council member relationships. The first one is relationship with the public. Members of council should refrain from arguing with a member of the public or staff at city council meetings, since these arguments seldom resolve concerns, and many times inflame feelings at a public meeting. Any concerns by a member of council over the behavior or work of a city employee during a council meeting should be directed to the city manager to ensure that concern is addressed.
Councilmember Richards?
Paul, does this apply, in your opinion, to an open, public forum meeting differently than it does apply in a, a regular council meeting with our agenda? Is there a difference in this?
It applies at city council meetings. So, are you speaking of, is there a difference regarding the agenda as?
Yeah, the reg, okay, the regular city council meeting, okay, I understand. But what if we have an open meeting where there's a big issue that comes up, and a lot of, the place is packed, okay? Which has happened in the past. Okay, and everybody wants to talk, you know?
Well, I think it's really just to try to set the tone, that it's not a good idea to have, you know, some sort of arguments back and forth during a public meeting. This is just a standard item that just shows that when those arguments occur, or something like that occurs, it's good just not to, not to argue in front of the public.
Right. It's up to you then to stop it.
Thanks, Carl. Any further discussion on this?
Thank you, thank you, Paul.
All right.
Next one, B, relationship with city staff and consultants. I'll read the whole thing. There should be mutual respect from both staff and council members of their respective roles and responsibilities, when and if expressing criticism in public session. Two, requests for information or questions by the city council should be directed to the city manager. All non-routine requests should be submitted to the city manager's office. All complaints should be submitted to the city manager. Three, all written information material requested by individual council members shall be submitted by staff and consultants to the manager, who will transmit them to council members with a notation indicating which council member requested the information. Four, council should not contact consultants or attempt to correct or influence staff or consultant in the selection of employees, recommendations for the awarding of contracts, the selection of consultants, the processing of development applications, or the granting of city license or permits. Five, incoming mail clearly marked as personal shall not be opened when addressed to individual council members or staff unless requested. Six, a council member shall not direct staff or consultant to initiate any action or prepare a report that is significant in nature, or initiate any project or study without the approval of the majority of city council. All such requests shall be first directed to the city manager.
I'm going to go to Lisa first.
I just was going to say that these aren't really legal comments or questions that were raised, it's really just a procedural, how you guys want to handle it issue.
Okay. Councilmember Kibble?
I think this is perfectly legit. My concern had been, I don't want to end up having our, our staff or our vendors just over, overshot by, you know, people reaching out to them. But at the same time, when you end up having a third party being the city manager that's trying to be the intermediary of trying to get to the kernel of what you're really looking for from somebody in a discussion, rather than going around and around and around, sometimes it's just easier to, to make an appointment with somebody, have a discussion, you know, that's, that's not too onerous time-wise, and actually reach the, the information that you're, you're looking for. So, this is, again, not one of those things, the hill I want to die on kind of a thing. I just think that there's a very reasonable way to, to have both, have that as an option, that you can end up coming to an accord with the city manager, set up a schedule, and then have that discussion directly, so.
Councilmember Dill?
I really do, I think that it can, I think it can get out of hand when you try to look...
Well, certainly it can.
I mean, we really have to pretend, we have to act like we're a board of directors, and Paul is the CEO of the company. I report directly to my CEO. If a board member came to me and chatted with me about marketing, that would be lovely. If he directed me in any way to do something or make any kind of decision, or I would not be able to do that thing, I would have to go to the CEO and ask. So, I just feel like, I think that we could all admit that people have stepped over the line on this, and have gone around Paul, or not even purposely, but I think it all, it does have to go through Paul, and I think we have to be really, we have to just make sure that we do that.
Correct. Councilmember Kennedy?
Well, I think it's, it's worked out very well. I mean, I had some questions for the water, wastewater plant. I directed the, the email to, to Paul and to Doug. Doug and Paul just, basically just referred to Doug to go ahead and answer them. Makes it real easy. And Paul's using the loop, because Paul didn't have the answers for it, and he, he gave it to the person that would. So, it wasn't a big deal.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Now, I, yeah, I agree. I think I've been, I've talked to you about this before, Paul, is that I don't understand why people aren't going to you. I understand there's been problems in the past. You do have things at your disposal. If there's a council member that is abusing that, you know, you have authority to contact the attorney. And, and I hate to say, but I think I put it in here, you can do a cease and desist letter. Tell, tell the individual, you know, you are to cease and desist from interfering with the employee's daily job, because these employees have rights. And, and any union employee can file a grievance against the city council member if that city council member is coming in and interfering with their job. So, you're going to be subject to a grievance from a union member? You can get a cease and desist from the city attorney. And there's also the other thing, Lisa, it's torturous interference with a contract. I mean, a city council member can be sued for torturous interference with a contract. The contract is between the city and the employee, and if you have a city council member that is going over and interfering with that employee's daily job, you know, hounding them, asking them to do things, blah, 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 that's interference with their job. And that has civil ramifications. So, I haven't had issues with this. I mean, this is fine. I mean, I don't, although I did have a question, because I'm going to talk about it tonight in one of the things. Could you explain, first of all, who's opening up people's mail? That was my question. Who's opening up other people's mail? Is that an issue?
It's just an added item, sometimes.
Oh, okay, because I was saying, who is going through people's mail? The, the one that I wanted to ask about is number four. And that says council shall not contact consultants, or attempt to correct or influence staff in the selection of employees. If you could have, have some discussion, recommendations for the, the selection of consultants. Well, the selection of a consultant may come actually before city council. You know, we may have consultants that we will hire. So, we're going to have some attempt to come in and to talk, and to find out who this person is. And I'm not going to say I'm going to influence anybody, but if I, if there's a candidate that appears to be good, and it's coming before me, I'm going to want to know as much as I can about that person. So, why is that there?
Well, I think if, in selection of consultants, I don't think there'd be any reason why a council member would contact a consultant as an individual, instead of as a, as a selection or as a grouping, unless you were directed so by council to ask specific questions. I think potentially if one council, or every single council member decides to contact a consultant before they are selected, I think that potentially could influence that decision, or a selection of, of that consultant to be potentially hired. I mean, I, I think, you know, we want to have the ability for, you know, for operations, but as all of you know, we have consultants, and anytime a consultant is contacted by an individual representing the city, they are put on the clock. Sometimes, you know, minor nature, they may not be. But if there is, a group of council says, okay, we would like so-and-so to contact the consultant, and ask this particular question, we can do that. But if everybody does it, then obviously it potentially adds to a bill, and which all of you approve every single month, so you're aware of that.
Can I add to that also?
Yes.
It actually protects you as well, so that there can't be any claim of acceptance of any gifts in order to carry a vote, if you're having these private conversations. There can't be any allegations of misconduct. Not that you would do it.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Paul, I realize, it's a different ballgame when you're on council, okay? There are things that I did, okay? I realized it, okay? When I was an activist for seven years before I was elected, okay, that infuriated some people, and especially our previous city manager, who demanded that everything that I'm doing when I'm contacting another entity, like the tube mill, be put in writing and given to her, okay? Which I did, okay? And I've done some with you also. But as a councilman, I can't cross over that line, okay? To just go, you know, talking to one of the businesses or something, or, or the head of a division. I got to be awful careful. Refer it to you, I understand that, okay? And then you advise me, where do you, where do you go with this, okay? I think we all do that, okay? Have to remember that. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
And what I don't want to do is inhibit any sort of personal contact that council member have with employees. I want to maintain those relationships. I want to ensure that those relationships continue. We're a small town here. I think it's important for those things to take place. I think sometimes employees, and this came up because employees contacted me, council members are contacting them regarding doing specific things. So, when it does affect the employees, I'm the one that, I have to ensure that I can kind of assist them. You know, we certainly don't want to have council members contacting employees based upon a collective bargaining agreement, because we don't want to, you know, do that, or usurp my potential authority regarding collective bargaining or negotiations, and they have, you may not have any idea what may be going on with negotiations. So, those potential things could happen. But when it comes to directing somebody to do something specifically, then it shall go through me. That's, and we just, I want to list those things, and I would rather not have to go through a process of having a cease and desist order, just because, you know, we will, if we do put this in place, then it is clearly defined, and everybody realizes it. And, and maybe some things have occurred in the past, but this is clearing it up, and it's just moving forward.
Councilmember Kennedy?
So, again, this, this would address those instances in the past where council members have leveraged their position to have city staff come and give them, you know, provide transportation around the city, and so on and so forth. That's not their function. That's not what they're here for. You know, if you want to have a meeting with them, and you've approved it, it's, the onus is on you to get out there and meet with them. They're not coming to pick you up, okay? The burden is on you. You should have the skills and the resources to make that happen. Correct?
Correct. And our staff wants to provide information to, to council, and I've talked with staff, and I've also talked with you. It's our job here at the city to provide you with enough information so you can make the important decisions, decisions that need to be made. And our staff want to offer that. But if someone does contact a staff member and ask for a tour, or ask for some time and sit with an hour, they have no idea the timeframe that that constraints, that that individual may be under for the work that they have to do during a given day, so if something may not be able to get done, and then they have to add, you know, answer to their boss, and then ultimately me, or maybe directly to me. So, I, we hope that this will prevent those things.
Okay, and again, you know, if you're going to have that meeting, the burden is on you to get to the meeting. They're not running a taxi service to come out and get you.
Correct.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
And does that also include council members asking department heads to do reports for them?
Correct. Council members should not be asking a department head to do a report for them. I mean, it does kind of state that, you know, in nature, initiate action or something like that, which is significant in nature. I mean, you ask them, could you tell me what happened last month, or something like that? Obviously, those sort of things can easily be answered. But if somebody asks for, I want a four-page report, and written out what transpired the last three months, and these particular things, it's, that needs to be directed towards me. Or if council wants that as a whole, then yes, we'd want to be able to provide it to all council members, and not just one individual. Because if one council member's usually asking for the information, it's probably on the mind of other individuals, so let's provide it to everybody, so everybody is aware of those things.
I'd like to do a follow-up. I want to go back again to the selection of consultants. So, if, if I run into somebody and chat with them, and they potentially could be a good third-party vendor for the city, are you saying that I can't talk to that person and bring that person's name forward to the city, and say, here's their credentials, you might want to look at them?
I, I would caution you on, or caution a council member on doing something like that, because that individual may feel that you're representing the city as a whole, or you've been directed to do so.
No, so you make it...
That's the case. But what I'm trying to say is that they may not know that.
No, that, that's not even the issue. The, the issue is, you're sitting there having a conversation with somebody, they appear to have pretty good credentials, it's clear you have no authority, it's clear you're not representing the city, it's clear that you, you're not a person that, all of that. All you are is a conduit, a conduit of information regarding a potential individual who might have a service that may be beneficial to the city. That's all it is.
Then yes, then that can be forward. You just clarified it by saying that there's no clear involvement like that. Then yeah, you can easily talk with them and say, here, here, contact the city, and here, what do you, what type of work do you do? Hey, you sound like you might be able to afford the city an opportunity to save money in a particular area.
Lisa, you have anything? No? Any further discussion?
Any further discussion?
You know, just a little bit longer on this.
Okay.
I think the distinction that I'm hearing from um councilmember Kurtzwell and, and the city manager is I, you're talking about just running into somebody that has credentials that you think would be beneficial to the city.
Networking.
And I think what's intended by this is somebody has a bid pending or is coming up for an interview or has something that is already coming to city council and you reach out to them and talk to them. I think that's where the big distinction needs to be made.
Okay.
Good clarification there, Lisa. Thank you.
That's good. That was a good, that's, that is exactly what I was looking for.
Thanks, Lisa. Sorry to answer that correctly.
Yeah. That was the point, okay.
Any further feedback on this one? All right, great team. We are on the final one.
See, relationship with boards, commissions, committees and other governmental agencies. Members of the city council should not attempt to influence boards, commissions or committee recommendations or to influence or lobby individual board, commission or committee members on any under, item under their consideration. It's important for boards, commissions and committees to be able to make objective recommendations to the city council on items before them. Members of city council that attempt to influence board, commissions or committee positions on an item that may prejudice or hinder their role in reviewing the recommendation as a member of the city council. Two, it suggests that city council members refrain from attending other public meetings. If they do attend, they should be cautioned about becoming involved at the meetings, discussions. Three, if a member of the city council represents the city before another governmental agency or organization, the city council member should first indicate the majority position as an opinion of the council. Personal opinions and comments may be expressed only if the council member clarifies these statements do not represent the position of the city council.
Lisa, go ahead.
So there were a lot of comments on this one, so I anticipate a lot of discussion. So if I could start off with this.
Please.
Yeah, please do.
So I, I think one thing that I need to just point out is that you appoint planning commission members, correct? So you're essentially the planning commission's boss. When you sit in a planning commission meeting, whether you say anything or not, your body language, your, your head signals, your nodding, your, your disgust, your grunting, your groaning, all of that can be deemed influencers to the planning commission and any member that you might appoint. So there's this undue influence aspect that I just wanted to point out. As we always talk about, whenever you go to a planning commission meeting, you usually, you have a liaison from city council on planning commission, right? You don't hear?
No.
No, the township does.
Township does. So, but if there's more, if there's a quorum of members present at the planning commission, obviously there's potential OMA violations that could take place just by expressing any views or again, body language or expressing your opinion without using words. And then there's this issue of whether or not you should, if you're expressing your opinion as a council member at a planning commission meeting, whether you should even vote when it comes to the city council. So if I were an applicant and I'm at planning commission and I'm putting this big presentation and you are expressing your opinion as a city council member to planning commission and it sways the planning commission one way or another, then as an applicant, am I going to want you to be voting on my decision if it wasn't favorable to me at the planning commission? And if you choose to vote, does that then give me a reason to appeal going forward? There's a lot of risk, which is why there's no, there, you're not, I'm not going to find one law that's going to say to you, you cannot go to planning commission meetings. I just think it's the totality of the risks involved if you go, which is why it's suggested that you not go. If you do have to go, want to go, choose to go, um please make sure that there's no quorum, no head signals, no verbal or nonverbal cues to the planning commission because again, you're their boss.
Councilmember Kennedy.
So Lisa, you know, how far out does that go? What other commissions and boards does that apply to?
All of them.
So that means historical commission?
All of them that you appoint.
Cable commission?
Yes.
And again, I know everybody up here has gone through this with the previous attorney and he's made it pretty clear that council members shouldn't be there. And yet, council members are there.
You're taking a risk. You're taking a risk for an OMA violation, you're taking a risk of not being able to vote when it comes to city council. I, I think you're creating a risk of a disservice to the city by going.
Thank you.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Lisa, the hot potato has been planning commission, okay? And Tim was very adamant, your predecessor was very adamant about uh how we have to handle things, okay? And the danger involved with even sitting in. Okay, but it's never been made clear, to me anyway, if we can go in that lobby and if we have something prepared that we've worked on and pass out some copies, okay, to the members of the planning commission or the chairman, okay? And especially a zoning ordinance that I wanted to, to look at from Green Oak, Salem, Northfield, somewhere, you know, that was considered to be an improvement over ours for some particular thing. In your opinion, your legal opinion, are we going against the rules if we do something like that?
Yes. It seems to be that would be the same thing as coming to a meeting and telling them your opinion. Just because you give it to them in writing, I don't think that deters all of the risks that we talked about.
Tim never said that. Okay, all right. Okay, what do we do now? I don't know.
Councilmember Kibble.
I've had the occasion to, to go to planning commissions, meetings and the rationale was, and I'm, I sit in the back corner and I'm benign and, you know, invisible. But the difference is when you, you look at the very skeletal minutes that are conducted in those meetings, you get no sense of, of the dynamics that had taken place in a conversation. And when we're trying to deliberate about coming to some conclusions about what the likely outcome of a project might end up being, it's really important to end up getting some characterization of how the relationship between planners and the people that are making a pitch for a project were conducted or the modification of a building, whatever it might end up being. I think it's a disservice to not go in with some more meat on the bone of trying to understand how both planning came to their conclusion and whether your version is that they came to the right conclusion. So.
May I respond to that?
Yes.
I, I think you can accomplish that goal by requesting minutes be more meaty or some recording of the planning commission that's accessible.
I would love that. That would, that would negate the need for any of that.
And that, and as far as the law is concerned, that wouldn't infringe on the law. But as I explained, being there is, is a risk. And if now you're expressing how you think it's beneficial, now other council members are going to say, well, I think it's beneficial too now. I want to go and, you see, it's, I think that it, I think we're better off if you were to get more meaty minutes or access to the recording.
I think the meeting minutes are, are unlikely to end up being satisfactory, but certainly a recording, so I'd be fine with us recording those minute, or those meetings. I think that would actually be a, a huge advantage for the public even for that matter. People that couldn't end up making it to the meeting.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, I'm going to come to you in just one moment.
Just to piggyback off that, um I know our friends at the cable commission have been getting quotes for the possibility of upgrading this room and maybe not having to have someone actually come in and film it. Because I think that would be the issue is we have to pay someone to come and film that.
Certainly.
So maybe there would be a way we could set that up where it would just auto-record when we get the new equipment. So just throwing that out there. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm a real open meetings act kind of person. I mean, I, I, I know that act pretty, pretty good. Um, I read a lot of the case law that comes out and there's really no case law out there that says, and, and I, I looked at it before we started this process. There's really no case law out there that specifically says that an elected official cannot attend. I mean, these are rules that are coming out because I, I get it, you're the city attorney and, and you have to do the best. I, I get all that. But it is an open meeting. And it's an open meeting that is open to the public. And if I want to come to a planning commission meeting and sit in the back and just listen to the debate, I'm a debate person. I, I'm not a rubber stamp person. I like to come to meetings, I like to hear what my, my colleagues on council say, I like to hear their opinions, I want to hear the other side of the issue. I am not a rubber stamp kind of person. That's not me. So going to a planning commission meeting allows me to sit back and just absorb the debate and listen to the debate. I don't go to individual commission members, even though I know some of them, I don't go to them and discuss with them, you know, prior to anything that comes before council. I keep my distance, um, all of that. So, so I'm very confident that I'm not crossing that line. But I do like to, if there's something very, very important that has a lot of technical knowledge, a lot of arguments for and against a development, I would like to know that because not everybody on council is going to know that. That's why you have a planning commission, because they have a developed skill set that they can tap into arguments that I never heard of, never thought of, and will broaden my perspective of the issue. So I'd like to be able to attend. You want to film them so that we don't have to go, but to bar people that are just going and not going to the microphone, but just going and listening to the debate. You know, I think, I think that's part of what makes us a good council is that we take in as much information as we can from wherever we can get it. I mean, I go over and I sit at planning commission meetings over in Lion Township and in other areas just so I can stay on top of local issues, debate, real estate issues. So I'm in these meetings all the time. I don't go here, but I would like to.
Sorry, Councilmember Kurtzwell, are you, are you done?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry. Is there language in here that's clearly stating you can't go to these meetings? Or is it just saying that you're opening yourself up to the possibility of those?
Yeah, well, it doesn't say that in here. That's what this purpose of this discussion is to tell you, you're opening yourself up to the possibility of these risks.
That's, that's what it says right now?
Yes. There, you're right, um, councilmember Kurtzwell. There is no law out there that says you cannot go to council, uh, planning commission or other committee meetings. It's just risky for the reasons that I articulated. I'm not going to chase you out of a, a planning commission meeting. You're entitled to do what you want to do. Uh, my job is to tell you that it's risky to do that and that, to recommend that you not do that.
Councilmember Kibble.
The only reason I brought it up was I didn't want somebody finding out Glenn went to a meeting. Citizens arrest, citizens arrest. So um, you know, just to make, not have to play that game, so.
Well, I don't think that this, the way it's written would do that, right?
No, but in, in case they didn't recognize that that was the situation.
Councilmember Dill.
Just one quick question. Is, is there any remedy for if there is a council person who seems to be abusing the, the situation or is, is still commenting in meetings when, you know?
Well, I think there would probably be legal action at that point in time possibly.
I mean, I'm not saying that they are doing anything wrong, but they go to the meeting and they are still making comments or?
I, I mean, they probably, they might get to the point where they can't serve in the capacity of city council member.
To make themselves vulnerable, yeah.
Councilmember Kennedy, did you have anything still?
I did, and it just sounds like, you know, as councilmember Kibble I think brought up, if they were, if they were taped, I mean, that would give you, you get to hear the whole discussion, you know, from the comfort of your home without having to be there and influencing in one way, shape or form.
Councilmember Walton.
Thank you. I actually just have a, a question of the online social media presence. Does that consider a committee or a commission or a meeting when somebody goes out there and starts making comments for councils? Yeah?
A council member making comments about items coming before council?
It, either that or commenting and saying, this is the opinion of council, blah, blah, blah. Would that be considered the same thing?
Well, it, if it hasn't, then, well, so it wouldn't be considered the same thing, but it's a separate discussion. And maybe social media should be something we address in the rules, which I hadn't considered. But if you're expressing council opinion before council meeting, obviously that's an issue because you're then implying that there have been discussions outside of a public meeting. If you're discussing decisions that have already been made, you're not sharing anything that's privileged to council, then I don't see any harm in it. If you're making comments about things that are pending either before committee or city council, then it could be interpreted as influencing a decision. It could be problematic. For all the same reasons.
Some of these items have really been brought up because we want everyone to understand that potentially that they may be influencing individuals when they don't even realize it, attending a meeting. You may even sit right next to somebody who three prior meetings has been on one side and not the other side. And even just your, your presence, just sitting next to an individual may convey that you are, you're approving or, or with them. But it's not telling you that you can't. We just want to make it known. We know items sometimes get discussed with members of different commissions and, and boards. We want to make sure that everybody fully understands what those ramifications may be, and I think Lisa outlined those for us.
Okay, did anyone else have anything to add to this discussion? All right, well, we will move on. Thank you for everyone's help on that.
The next step, Mary, is we'd be, we would be compiling all of these items and then bringing it back for your review and then everybody get the opportunity to, you know, make comments with, at a meeting. We'd have it on the agenda.
All right. Fantastic. Move on to new business number one tonight. Schedule 2020, 2021 budget workshop meetings.
Uh, each year we schedule city council workshops to go over and plan our upcoming budget. This year I'm proposing to schedule a budget workshop between March 27th and April 3rd. Uh, I'd also like to schedule a budget workshop to review our pension liabilities. This meeting I would like to schedule for Monday, March 2nd. We already have confirmation that our auditor can be there. We have also invited our MERS representative. And I want a council tonight to bring their schedules and discuss their availability for both of those meetings.
I'm sorry, Paul, I missed the second date. I had March 2nd as one of them. Oh, that was the only date you said? Okay.
Yeah, right. And the, and the other one, that is for the pension liability meeting. And that is on a Monday. And I'd like to do that at 6:00 PM if it works for everyone.
Okay.
You want to find out who it's going for?
Does anyone have any feedback on that? Councilmember Kennedy?
Good for me.
That appears to work for me as well. Councilmember Dill?
That worked.
Kibble?
Yep.
Okay. Hey, how about that? Can we go two for two?
And the other one would be scheduling the budget workshop. I know there are people that are, are taking vacations and whether we need to go to following weeks, we can do that also. Hopefully all of you have your schedules and we can throw out specific dates and times.
Oh, go.
This is the week of the 27th, was it? The 27th through whatever initially is what you were looking at, Paul?
Right, I said, uh, the 27th through the 3rd. That's, that's Friday, then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Is that February 27th?
March.
March 27th, okay.
And April.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'd be available on Monday, the 20, or Friday, the 27th or Monday, the 30th.
I'm actually out of town on both those days.
For me, it would go into the next week, huh?
So we're looking at April?
Yes.
That would be Monday, the 6th through the 10th.
Monday, the 6th?
Monday, the 6th.
Not available on the 6th. 7th through the 10th, that'd be available.
Easter is on the 12th this year.
7th, 9th or 10th.
7th is good for me.
7 seems to work here too.
What, what day in the week is that?
That is a Tuesday.
April 7th?
Yep.
I can make myself available.
Yeah, I can too.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Would 6:00 PM work also for that date? That one would be like last time, we would bring in something to eat as well. You all, the same thing for-
We'll do the same thing for, we know you're coming in for your schedule, so we could do the same thing for the pension meeting as well.
Food makes everyone in a good mood, so.
Yeah.
So if that works for everybody, then we'd need a motion for March 2nd, then, for the pension liability meeting, and also for April 7th, then, for the budget workshop meeting.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll make the motion that we hold the pension liability workshop on the March 2nd at 6:00 PM. Do you want separate ones or you want them together?
You can do it together if you want.
And that we hold the budget workshop on Tuesday, April 7th, both of them at 6:00 PM here at City Hall.
Support.
We'll designate the rooms later each week.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the budget this evening. Councilmember Kurzweil?
I had a question to ask you. At last year's budget meeting, we talked about having a staff employee adding hours to her workday. And the purpose of adding the hours were to give her an opportunity to search for grants. Has she produced any grants this past year because of...
Yeah, she's assisted the fire chief in grants. I know she's worked with police chief and also attended additional workshops also to look for locations to apply for grants.
Anything for Parks and Recs? I'm just curious.
Nothing that I can recall, no.
Okay, here, I had, I can talk to you about it after the meeting, but I kind of wanted to bring it to council, and that's why I was asking the question this time about the consultant. I had an opportunity to go to the Michigan Recreation and Park Association to their annual meeting. I knew a lot of people there, so I knew who a lot of them were and had friends over in Novi, up in Farmington and Northern Oakland County. So it was good sort of seeing people they hadn't seen in a while. And I took a lot of time to go through the trade show and spoke to a lot of people, talked to a lot of people. And one of the things that really, really, I sat back and just listened to what people were saying was on this grant writing for Parks and Recs. And I just wonder if maybe, and I'm just throwing it out there because I'm just trying to think through this, is that after listening to a couple of these landscape architects, this is a highly specialized field. These are, these people that run these landscape architect firms that specialize in developing recreational parks are highly skilled with this grant writing. It's part of the skill set that comes with their firm. And there was one firm in particular that I spent a lot of time talking to. He was very, very informative, and I wonder if maybe we don't have it right here in the city. I wonder if maybe what we need to do is to get onboard a landscape architect that specializes in recreational facilities. Get that person in here, have them make a presentation. Because the gentleman that I spoke to, his plans, he has done stuff for Delhi Township. He's up in Rochester now, doing stuff in Troy, finished off with stuff in Novi, has done stuff in Royal Oak. His success rate for getting grants is about 85%. And I'm saying to myself, that's a statistic that, boy, I can take on. 85% success rate in getting grants in park development. And I think maybe some of what we are missing is that we are not getting the right people in place, onboard, that have a very fine-tuned skill set. This is a firm and a gentleman, these are, all these architect, doesn't matter who you pick. These are people, he was explaining to me, these grants are very, very detailed, and you better know the formulas, and they tweak them every year. And he said, it's like, almost like having projects, you know, shovel-ready products, projects ready to go. You, to get these grants, you need to have plans in place so that when the tweak comes in the grant and you fit that tweak, your application's ready to go. You know, and so that's something we don't have here. And I wonder if maybe we need to take another look at how we are managing development of our parks. And rather than going to the budget and getting money to do it, why don't we, I mean, what have you got to lose? You know, is to bring somebody in and have them give a presentation, find out what their success rate is on grant writing, get them onboard, and let's see how we can get these parks developed. I'm telling you, I spent a ton of time on that Wednesday talking to these people, and I realized, we don't get it here. We don't get it. This is a highly specialized field in grant writing on these recreational grants. And the one firm that I spoke to, you know, they're in Lansing, so they know the players. That's another key right there, is knowing the players on the board. We don't know the players on the board. I mean, these people know the players. They know the people that run these organizations that do the grants. So it's just an idea. I don't know how council feels about it, but I think maybe we need to rethink how we are looking for monies. And I think grant writing is probably the way to go, but we just got to get that right fit. So that was my thing on the budget. Thank you.
Councilmember Dilch?
I just wanted to add that I do agree with, I was at the same meeting and spent some time in that meeting and in a workshop also learning about TAP grants and, you know, transportation ones. And I actually talked to Paul about this as well. And I was thinking, one, yes, I agree, my firm actually does some of that stuff, not that we would do, use my firm. I'm just saying that that's what we, you know, some of the stuff that we do. But also, I was talking to some people from Novi, and they actually have a grant committee that helps more just kind of figure out what kind of grants we could maybe do and even, and try to plan it out. And I just thought that that might be an interesting things that we might want to consider as well at some point, is to have, you know, you could have a couple of people from council, a couple even citizens, a couple from planning, or however you want to do it. But I did speak with a couple of Novi city council members, and they, and that is something that they do. So I just, I agree with you. I think there's money, there is some money out there. It's not like, you know, I think sometimes people think that there's more than there is, but there's definitely money in TAP grants and definitely money in some of the other recreational ones as well.
Councilmember Kivell?
I'm all for the idea. The reality check is that typically you don't get in the door without match money. So we need to end up understanding what our position is so that we can actually, if it's a real attempt, then we can, we can play. But if not, if we don't have some pot of gold, we're just spinning our wheels, so.
We're going to go to Councilmember Kurzweil first, and then we'll come back.
I'd like to tag on to what Councilwoman Dilch has said. I also spoke to Novi. But the difference with Novi is that they had the experience already there. See, that's the difference. We don't have it. They have years and years of phenomenal grant writing experience, of which one of these firms actually works with. So they have built this talent in-house over the years. But they did start with a firm that came in and did exactly what I was saying, came in and sort of took charge of their Parks and Recs and said, okay, this is where you're going to go. Here's how you can plan it. These are the grants that you may qualify. You may not get one of these grants for five years, but you've got the project ready to go. And you got to start somewhere. So I agree with you completely. And maybe, maybe we do a hybrid, you know? Maybe we do, you know, work on a hybrid. But I just think that we have to rethink this a little bit because obviously there are communities out there that are successful in developing their parks. And so I went around to those places, and I asked them what they did. And this is their formula, and this is what we are not doing. So I spent a whole day, so it was very interesting. Just want to propose that I can give you the name of the company I spoke with and the gentleman, and maybe have them come in and listen to what they have to say, at least.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, we do have someone that we work with, with parks. I think the first step in this whole process is developing the plan for parks so we know exactly what we want to apply a grant for. I don't think that's ever really been set. You know, we had a $5 million price tag on Volunteer Park, but it's never been, it's always just been out there. Nobody's ever kind of gone for and said, hey, let's start this process and put in one baseball field. Let's start this and do this for this parking lot. Let's start to this. And I think Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec Commission have taken the step this past year and now have identified some of those things that they want to do. And the one individual that we have worked with has helped develop our plan for those parks, is Mark Russell. And Mark has applied for those grants, and Mark has talked about it at numerous meetings, but don't provide the guidance and assistance in applying for those because he's got them also. And I've worked, when the communities that I've worked, and we got a passport grant or Parks and Rec grant from the state of Michigan, where half of it was paid for putting in a bathroom facility at a park. There are those grants out there. You just need to ensure, as Councilmember Kivell said, you need to allocate the funds for that. You need to have the plan and what's the next step, and we want to continue to move forward. So I wholeheartedly agree. It's getting that, getting that step and doing those things necessary to further our parks and further our community with what everybody wants to see.
85% rate of getting grants approved. That was high.
Councilmember Dilch, did you have something still?
I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else with anything on the budget this evening? Move on to the manager's report?
I advise council regarding, we received a purchase agreement for a piece of property that the city owns. The current property is not for sale. Recommend about responding to the individual request that the property is not for sale. But we will, we have discussed within the DDA, their Economic Vitality Committee, specific properties within the city that are potential for development, some properties that we own. And I plan on bringing some property information to city council during our budget sessions where we talk about what we'd like to do with some of our future properties within the city. We've already established as far as our budget meetings. The last item that I want to address is respond to an individual, and unfortunately, in this day and age, rumors somehow circulate through staff members or social media, whatever it may be. The rumor is that I was leaving, and I'm going to acknowledge it here now that I'm not leaving. It's untrue. For some reason, people like to spread these rumors, and I don't know what the reasons may be. I'm not really concerned about it. If I had to respond to rumors all the time, I wouldn't have any chance to, as far as to do my job. But when something like this is just a blatant lie and they contact my individuals or contact staff to make a statement like this, I feel that I need to respond because unfortunately, it does take its toll on you when something like this occurs. So I felt that I needed to respond that to council today and to all the staff that may be listening, so. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone have anything for Paul? Councilmember Walton?
Paul, just a quick question. I've had several people ask me when the cleanup is going to take place at Lyon Cantina, and I realize that's out of our jurisdiction. Is there something we can put a little push on that and get it taken care of?
It's all going to be based upon the insurance company and working with the township. We can certainly talk to them and try to request to see if they know anything because I'm sure they're getting calls as well.
Yeah. That's my only question. Thank you.
All right. We will move on to public comment. Please remember to state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Judy Keeling, 62180 Arlington Circle, South Lyon, Michigan. I think my question's to you, Paul. Colonial Acres is up for review for taxes, and it may have already happened, but at the last meeting, we were told it was pushed back. And I just want you to know how important that is to especially the new, the people that have recently bought in Colonial Acres, their taxes really went high compared to the previous owners. And a lot of these people are on fixed income. So I just want to let the city know that it's really important to these people in Colonial Acres. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Megan McAllister. My address is 42109 Roscommon Street, Northville, Michigan. I'm here today because I'm introducing myself. I'm a candidate for state representative for us here in House District 38 in South Lyon. And I wanted to make, let you all know, you know, firsthand that I am here and I am running. I am running because we need new and different backgrounds up in Lansing now more than ever. I am not a career politician. I'm not a lawyer, but I'm a Michigander who stayed here through the recession. And I think that that's important, that we have new and different voices. I am over a decade-long career in business, and I was in my master's program, actually, for counseling when I wrestled with the fact of going into a broken healthcare system. And rather than to finish out my very last internship, I chose to go into politics. I chose to go into politics because we need a voice in Lansing that's going to be speaking for people and be speaking from an experience to be able to advocate for others, but also be able to get the job done. I've been a manager for over 10 years. I know how to get work done and to work across the table with lots of different opinions. I think it's important that we, as a city and as a county and as a state, have our people represented by someone who's a regular person, who sends my kids to school, who my dad lives here in South Lyon, and know firsthand how important it is that our water is clean, that our public education is funded, and that we have affordable healthcare, that our seniors are taken care of, and that we have childcare for those of us who have younger kids. It's important that we take the steps now for us to move forward. And I would like to be that person for us in State, House District 38. I would ask you, I'm going to have one little longer, ask you to take a look at McAllister for Michigan dot com, and I'd really appreciate getting a chance to talk with you more and ask how I can earn your vote by August 4th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. All right. At this time, we will close our public comment and move on to council comments. Councilmember Kurzweil, why don't you kick us off tonight?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank John Dolan from the Lyon Township Supervisor for his comments in the Oakland Press in opposition to House Bill 5229 and the Regional Transit Authority Tax. That's the RTA tax, which will uncap Headley. So if you're concerned about the taxes in Colonial Acres, the seniors need to get behind opposition to the RTA tax. It's a very, very devastating tax. People in South Lyon will never see the benefits of it at all, and that tax will unlift Headley. So many residents of South Lyon approached me and asked me to thank John Dolan for his leadership in the Lyon Township area for his opposition. So, John, this is my thank you tonight from myself and for lots of South Lyon residents for you speaking out on this tax in the Oakland County Press. Yes, it is golf season coming around the corner, and on Saturday, May 30th of 2020, Blessings in a Backpack will be having their fifth annual golf outing over in Tanglewood. This organization does so much for our youth in the community. And Katie, you just do a great job. You and your team are just absolutely wonderful for all the good work that you do in our community. So please remember, Blessings in a Backpack, there'll be more on that as the spring and early summer arrive. Next, just on a public health comment, just want to remind everybody that we are in the flu season. Please wash your hands frequently. Please eat well. Eat your fruits, eat your vegetables, get plenty of sleep. And if you are not feeling well, please do not go to work. Don't associate with a lot of people. Stay home until you get better. This flu season is just horrible. It's taking its toll, and let's do what we can to control as much of it as we can. Wash your hands, stay healthy. Have a great week, everybody. We'll see you at the next city council meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think it's kind of funny that you're talking about spring and summer, and the two things that I have to talk about are winter. So the first I want to say is recognize Brett Jackson from South Lyon. He participated in the Winter World Master Games. They are recognized by the International Olympic Committee. He was on one of the four USA teams for curling, and his team actually took the bronze. So congratulations to Brett. It's just another wonderful thing that came out of our city. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is I spent some time over at Mayberry Park last night with the friends of Mayberry Park doing a winter hike. What a phenomenal event that was. I mean, it was just... I mean, it was just well-organized, they had great, uh, participation. And yeah, the weather wasn't lovely, but it was actually a very beautiful, very peaceful walk. And they do these walks several times throughout the year, so, you know, we talk often about getting out to our library, and we talk about getting over to Kensington, but let's get out to Mayberry Park as well. It's so close by, and it's just one of our state parks, so, and it's a nice little slice of heaven in our area, so, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Richards.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have a few little things I want to mention here, and I'll try to be concise as possible. Well, first of all, many of you have noticed that at the corner of Dixboro and Ten Mile, uh, a good number of trees have been cut. And, uh, these were all the walnut trees that have been talked about at an earlier time. And I want to let you know it was done professionally, no amateur job, and it was done by Tri-County out of Clinton, Michigan. They're one of the three biggest mills in the state, and they pay, they're one of the top payers. They pay most money, just about. And, uh, I could give you an estimated value of it, but I think I'll pass on that. But, uh, think of, you ought to watch this property and see how things go on this. And in my own opinion, those trees didn't have to be cut, but he was perfectly legal in cutting them under his permit. Okay, I'm at number two, real fast here. I want to make a shout out to the seniors that are watching this on Channel 19, okay? Everybody that's, and I'm a senior also, I have been for the last eight years. We're all under a lot of pressure today. Uh, we're hit and bombarded by everything coming through the media, social media, uh, and programs to try to get us to join on a healthcare team by all kinds of sports stars and government officials and imitation looks, they look like social security cards, okay? And a lot of them say down at the bottom, a sales agent will call you, okay? And you can't block the calls on your phone. And it's, it's just a mess. I, behind the scenes, I'm working to try to get somebody to come here, okay, to a city council meeting and give us a 10-minute presentation on what the truth is about everything that's going on out there to take a little pressure off, the stress and worry that all the seniors are going through at this time. Okay, next, next little quickie item. Uh, I think there's a bond proposal coming up with our school district. It's not real soon, it's down the road a ways, but, uh, I thought I'd just show it to you, there's side A, it's side B. This is just the rough parts of it, and it's going to be codified more clearly in the future here. The vote won't be till May, but, uh, I think everyone needs to be aware of what's going to happen with this and the details of it. You'd be very amazed about it. Next item, number four, uh, just to let you know, the hill down the street here on McCady Park is getting used by lots of kids. And that's a good thing, that's a, that's a, that's what it's there for, okay? And that's what we want them to do, okay? Next item, the historic program coming up next week, the 18th. The Historical Society is having a program about antique cars that are obsolete today. It's quite a, it'll be a, uh, three-quarters an hour program. Automobiles like the Tucker and the Packard and Rambler and a few other things quite a ways back, okay, that are obsolete and discontinued and not around today. And it's going to be professionally done, and I thought I'd just show this to you quickly, okay? And look forward to it. And finally, uh, people, we need to get more people applying for our commissions. Since the first of the, this year, we haven't had one person that's applied to be on a commission. And I know in the previous year, we all pleaded to the people viewing us, gee whiz, folks, come on out and join a commission and be part of things, because we need help. Well, we knew, we still, we need help, okay? And, uh, I hope there's people out there that can see their way to serve. The rewards that you get from serving are greater than just sitting back and watching somebody else do it, believe me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the City SEMCOG Representative, I attended a seminar last week to discuss the upcoming census. As part of the 2020 census, letters will be sent to households next month, providing instructions for completing it. For the first time ever, the U.S. Census Bureau will accept responses online and by phone. You can still complete the census by mail if you choose. It is important that the census be completed for everyone living at that address. If people spend the year in different locations, they should complete the census for the location where they spend 51% of the year or more. City snowbirds who spend three to four months in Florida should complete it identifying South Lyon as their residence. Every resident needs to be counted. The census is much more than just a head count. It provides a picture of our nation that helps determine where to build new schools, hospitals, and businesses, how federal funding is distributed, and how congressional seats are apportioned. It determines how over $675 billion in federal funds is distributed annually and even more in state funds. Based on the 2010 census, this represents about $1,800 per person per year or $18,000 for the next 10-year period. That is money that's lost for every person that has not counted in the upcoming census. The information you provide is totally confidential and cannot be shared with any other governmental, governmental agency. The Census Bureau will not ask for your social security number, bank or credit card account numbers, money or donations, or anything on behalf of a political party. So please, complete the census questionnaire accurately. Everyone needs to be counted. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Dill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things, I just want to say congratulations to Aubrey's, the one store of the year for Michigan. That was a pretty cool thing that they got. Um, also wanted to mention that, um, Grand Trunk, Lemon Tree, and Venue are having a Galentine's Day shopping event on Wednesday from 12 to 7:00, and there'll be some prizes and some, um, things that you can get by shopping at all three stores. So it's a, a good, um, joint effort that they had. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and it's, it means a lot to me, and I hope that I did not get emotional, but on July 25th, there's going to be a South Lyon Pride event in McCady Park. They, I want to say a couple of things about that. I met a man recently who lived here, grew up here, and felt like he had to move. He's a senior now, it felt like he had to move because he was gay, and he felt like he couldn't live in South Lyon. And, uh, he served our country, and he did move back as a senior. And we've talked about that a lot, and it was really touched me. And then there's these young people who came up and said they're going to have a South Lyon Pride event. It's extremely brave thing for them to do. They want to celebrate diversity in a fun, family-centered, empowering atmosphere. This is not going to be some crazy pride parade. It's going to be a, a family-friendly with activities and some music and some vendors. And all they want to do is to let people know that they can be who they are in South Lyon, and they don't have to leave here to be who they are. I just want to say, please support it if you can, and if you can't, please find something else to do. I just, they're brave and optimistic, and I sincerely want this to go well for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Uh, Councilmember Kibble.
Once again, I want to climb on the bandwagon with that. I, I'd already pushed the button that I'll be at that, that event, so, um, it, it's, it's anathema to me why people have to end up trying to impose their views on others. Let people be who they want to be, and everything will be fine. Uh, the only thing, other thing I wanted to add was, uh, Carl had mentioned the volunteer thing. Luckily, I saw somebody sign up for being in the election crew so, today, so we've got one less obstacle in front of us. So, uh, but please, step up, take responsibility, enjoy being some of the, um, some of the power of moving our community forward. It's really rewarding, so I, I would really applaud anybody that would step up and throw their two cents worth in there, so, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Keep this brief, Friday night, congratulations to the South Lyon East boys and girls as they swept, uh, the match in the doubleheader, is what I'm looking for there, at South Lyon High School. The boys ended up splitting on the road, so South Lyon won at South Lyon East, and South Lyon East won at South Lyon. It was a great game. South Lyon had a chance to tie it with 12 seconds left and missed on a three, and the place went crazy. It was both student sections banned, it was, it's a great, great event. Um, and there's a chance they may meet again in the conference, uh, tournament. So if that's the case, I definitely encourage you guys to get out there. But again, congratulations to the East girls and boys basketball team for sweeping the doubleheader on Friday night. And with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a great.